I'd like to reconvene school committee from executive session. So we're now back in open session. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of May the 8th. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of May the 8th?
Move to approve the minutes of May the 8th?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion about that? All in, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, okay. Oh, I should mention that our fifth school committee member, Mr. Quigley, is away on business. So he's not here tonight and he's not, and Mrs. Moser is joining us via computer. Or wifi or whatever. Okay, next order of business is public comment. So are there any comments from the public? No? Okay, thank you. Right, so Dr. Klingerman, would you like to give your report to the committee?
Sure, I just have a very brief report tonight.
Right.
I just wanted to say that we're finishing up our district committees that we've had throughout the year, the district curriculum committee, the social emotional learning committee, the school wellness advisory council, several other committees. But we'll be putting an end of the year report in the June school committee folder because we just ran out of time to have all of the different groups come to report back to you. So I just wanted you to look out for that in the next meeting folder.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Blake?
So I just have two quick updates for tonight. So the first update is that we are in the final planning stages of bus registration for the upcoming school year. And we're hoping to open up registration to families next week. And then we've also begun our initial planning for the fiscal year 21 operating and capital budget. So that will include our district budget calendar, our operating budget requests, and a comprehensive and multi-year capital plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Right. Jess, do you want to go?
Yep, so seniors have their last full day of school altogether on Monday, so they're doing exams this week. And then they have their last, one of their last final events before graduation on Friday, where they do the senior cookout, and then they rehearse for graduation. So that's very exciting for them. And then the, or the club Ducks Buds, which used to be Best Buddies, has their, it's kind of like a prom, but it's a spring dance coming up on Friday, which is always one of my favorite events of the year. And I know all the kids love it, so that's exciting. And on May 23rd, the 7th and 8th graders have their chorus concert at 7:00 PM in the pack. And then I think the following week, the 6th graders also have their concert. And then DMS is having their Spring Fest, which I'm pretty sure is pretty new, run by their student council. And it's on May 31st, and basically, I think it's, they just play games and have fun together. And I know DHS student council is also helping out with that, facilitating the event. And then lastly, on June 5th and 6th, the 2nd graders have their trip over to Alden to get their help with transitioning, which is cool, I remember that. It seems like a long time ago, but it definitely helps.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I had just a couple of things to report. First off, I was reading the latest newsletter from the North and South River Watershed Association, and I came upon a little article on the power of place-based learning. And so I was reading about Ducksbury Middle School, where their 8th grade is studying reproduction and adaptation. And they've been working with the North and South River Watershed Association's environmental educator, and they had a field trip to visit Harang Run Park in Pembroke. So congratulations, that's a great, great example of using our local environment to extend learning and get kids familiar with, with all that's around us. So thanks for that. The other thing I wanted to report on, Dr. Antonucci and I met with the town manager, Renee Reed, and the finance director, John Adams, to discuss the forecast for, or the change in the forecast for tuition, out-of-district tuition related to vocational technical schools. So in previous years, our students leaving Ducksbury to go to vocational technical schools have been on the order of seven or eight students. And so that was the basis of our forecast for fiscal year 2020. And it turns out that we're likely to have about 19 students enrolling in vocational technical education in September. So that will cause an adjustment to our budget forecast for the school's operating budget. So we, thanks to Mrs. Blake, we went through the numbers with the town manager and the finance director, and the total variance is $222,888 if all of those 19 students enroll in these schools in September. So we had an initial discussion that was very productive about how we would go about funding this. And it's clear that including vocational technical education expenses within a school district's budget is not common practice in Massachusetts. Both Mr. Reed and Mr. Adams said that they'd never come across it in their previous careers prior to Ducksbury. So there was also some discussion about migrating that expense line across to the education expenses of the town, rather than keeping it within the school operating budget. So we'll keep you updated on that, but it's an ongoing discussion.
And can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I just want to be perfectly clear that as a school committee, we've all been completely supportive of VOGED.
Yes.
And I think, and I myself have been a big proponent, not every single student wants to prepare to go to college. So I think it's great that, because we don't have it, we have some great schools around us. And we're paying for the tuition as well as the transportation.
Right.
So I just wanted to say, we're all 100% in support of VOGED.
Yes.
So it's just sort of a how-to-pay-for-it issue.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, just to follow up on that.
Do you want to continue?
Actually, that was what I was going to talk about too, it was a very productive meeting, and it's, it's really, we had a really productive conversation. So I mean, I just kind of want to publicly thank Renee and John, they're very, very supportive. And again, just sort of having a common understanding that this is a highly unusual practice is just kind of.
The accounting practice, yeah.
You know, and I think to Kelly's point, you know, we've got a couple, I got kind of an angry email from a parent, and then there was, I think, a pretty misinformed letter to the editor today about, about the issue. And I just caution people not to take this out of context. We've been talking about this at this table since probably my first month when I came to Ducksbury. I think I brought it up in October 2017. This is an accounting issue, period. It's not a indictment on vocational education, it's not a judgment on, it's literally an accounting issue. And so I just really do caution people to not take it out of context, and I would reiterate this president, and I'm thrilled that these kids are having the opportunity.
Exactly.
To go to South Shore and some of the Norfolk Aggies, where they're incredible programs. And right now, those schools are doing things for certain kids that we can't do, right? So it's an incredible benefit. But from an accounting standpoint, the Ducksbury Public Schools can't be bearing the brunt of that, of that impact, which is what we're trying to reconcile. And again, the town was very supportive and understanding of that, and I'm very confident that it'll, it'll get better in the future. So, yeah, I appreciate that. I would just always ask people if they have a question about it, you know, to not rely on a snapshot article on a paper to make judgments about something that's been a two-year conversation. So please, I welcome any phone calls.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Now you have an item you want to.
Yeah, so we have a very special guest in the audience tonight, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Donovan, but tonight, we're going to spend a few minutes recognizing Gordy Layton for his, this is not a typo, 56 years of service in the Ducksbury Public Schools. And Gordy, thanks for coming, and Gordy has his family with him, and we thank you for coming. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you very much.
So I would again, I would thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Gordy Layton is retiring in some way from, almost for the second time, from the Ducksbury Public Schools. So he was hired as a teacher in 1963, and had, and taught a full career in the Ducksbury Public Schools. And sometime around, well, 51 years ago, he became our student accounts manager. And he has faithfully done that for 51 years, along with the help of his family and his wife Gloria, who is here as well. And there is not a single club at the high school that has done anything over the last 50 years without Gordy's help. And so the, the role that he fills in the school is one that we spent with Katie and with Sarah, weeks trying to figure out, and months trying to figure out how we were going to solve when Gordy left. And so we are just so grateful for his time and for his dedication to the students of Ducksbury, almost two careers worth. He proudly told me a week and a half ago that in the town, excuse me, in the town report, he is the longest-serving employee.
Wow.
And he means a ton, and has meant a ton to our school over the last 56 years. And so I wanted to thank him, and we all wanted to thank him for his time and his dedication to the kids. In addition to those two hats, he's worked probably almost every football game, probably for the same amount of time. He also runs the scorer's table for basketball games, and he's just a wonderful guy. So we have a small token of appreciation tonight, and then we are actually going to put a, install a plaque on the scorer's table at half-court, where he's been working faithfully for decades, in honor of his service to the kids and to our community.
Great.
That's what I just wanted to, thank Mr. Layton.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay? But I think we've got something a little backwards here. No, I firmly believe that it's I who should be thanking the town of Ducksbury, okay? And here are my reasons, okay? And as, I firmly believe that, okay, you gave me the, well, okay, the chance to meet and work with so many fine people, okay? And talented people, such as, okay, the parents of all the students I taught, okay? The business people from both the town hall and Chandler. Then we cut at the school, the secretaries, the custodians, administrators, and then, of course, all of my colleagues, okay, from teaching. I, also, I want to thank them for giving me, or not, excuse me, giving, but having the trust and the faith in me to be able to teach, okay? So many students. I taught approximately 4,000 students in my time. Students who I've seen, okay, grow, become mature young adults, and who've gone on to many vocations, doctors, nurses, teachers, firemen, policemen, lawyers, you gotta get, you gotta get them in here. Okay? And one in particular was, works for the CIA, okay? And there's so many others, okay? Thanks, okay, to the town for allowing me to really teach every grade level, okay, in the school, from calc, from the basic math to the calculus, okay? And I'm thankful also, okay, for the town to allow me to work for more years, the number of years after I stopped teaching, okay? Jack Hill, okay, I remember, when I retired in 94, okay, he came to me, he said, Gordy, this was in September, this school had already started, okay? And he says, I want you to finish out the year if you, okay? We haven't got anybody to do it. Well, that one year led to 24 more years, okay? Making a total, as Jim just mentioned, 51 years for that student activities job, which I gotta be honest, I truly love, still do, okay? And I'm going to miss it, okay? Before, okay, I, I give my final, okay, comment, I'd like to introduce my family here over there, okay? One, this is Nancy, she's my youngest, okay? She's my little mother hen, okay? She's, she takes, she looks after both my wife and I all the time, okay? And makes very many wise decisions for us. We heed to her advice.
It's time for him to retire.
Okay? And sitting beside her is my sister Teresa, okay? And she has a lot to do with the town of Ducksbury and the students. She's, this is her 45th year driving the bus.
Oh, wow.
32 years, okay, of that is in Ducksbury, okay? So this is her 32nd year for Ducksbury, okay? And the one in front, okay, that's my rock, as far as that's concerned. She had a little mishap at Mother's Day. She fell and tripped, and she fractured her top of her shoulder and her arm in four different places.
Golly.
So, and that's her. And she has been a tremendous help to me, okay? And in more ways than not, okay? And I don't know what I would do without her. As far as that is concerned, she has also helped me in my bookkeeping job, okay? When I was incapacitated back in December and January, she did the books. So I do her. So I want to thank her, okay? Thank her for being herself, okay? And also for being my very best friend.
Great.
Okay? And I do love her. My final statement, seriously, is this, Ducksbury, thank you, okay? From the two of us here, for 56 wonderful years.
Great.
Okay?
Great, thank you so much.
Can we take a picture? We will go back, we'll go back so you can be at that.
Absolutely. That was true for the bus. Like his first retirement was when I started my career.
Yeah, it's a year before I went to grad school.
I'm so sure you're going to be able to.
You okay?
By the way, we're celebrating our 58th anniversary this November.
Kelly, I think you're up on there. I think you have to stay on your Gmail though. I don't even know what I'm doing.
Thank you.
I had the whole folder, it's the same thing. All right, I'm coming out of everything.
I'm adorable with that.
I had it totally open, all the folders, it wasn't on mine.
It was some Ducksbury swag.
When I just brought it back.
Ducksbury swag.
It wasn't showing. All right, should I go back to Savan? I just closed it off. I believe it keeps turning off when I give it back to you. No, it was nothing there.
This isn't it, but we do all like Ducksbury.
I'm not making a joke.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's great.
Good. Okay.
People do so much for us.
No, it's this laptop.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, are we, should we move on?
Yep, yep.
Okay. So we have a couple of discussion items coming up. The first is a school improvement plan, reports from the building principals. So I'll leave it up to you to decide what order you want to go in.
We'll all come up together.
Okay.
It's a party.
Okay. And.
Are you going to project that?
Yes, I will.
Oh, okay.
They can see you.
No, but they're going to project.
Awesome.
I'll get this one.
Hello.
Hello.
So we are going to, we're up here together tonight, we're all going to sort of highlight one item from our school improvement plan that we really wanted to focus on. And you're welcome to ask questions about any of the other ones, but we're going to focus on one goal each to sort of talk about. Our slides have a lot of words on them, but I'm going to really just talk about our first goal from our school improvement plan this year, which focused on social emotional learning at Chandler. So the goal was to promote the importance of social emotional learning for all children, and we were looking to increase resources and awareness for all staff members and students. So one of the things that we did was focused on our SEL webpage that was really created for staff. And I do have to give Sue McNeil, our assistant principal, the kudos on that one, because she worked on that with our Chandler Green team, which was our Chandler-based SEL team of teachers. And they basically worked to update resources, books, lesson plans, they used meeting time to really create lesson plans that they uploaded to the site. And then Sue put together a weekly little snapshot of the website that went out as part of my weekly email to staff. So each week, the staff would get a highlight of something that was on the website, having trouble with, you know, peer relationships in your class, here's an article and a lesson that may focus on that. So it really just pointed out for teachers ways that they could use the resources that we had gathered and, you know, have them sort of forced exploring on the, on the resources that we had put together. In addition to that, we had done some school-wide different celebrations this year. We did Start With Hello Week at the beginning of the year, and the Great Kindness Challenge, which I think all four of our schools did. We, at Chandler, we focused on grade-level kindness challenges. So each student got a kindness bingo board, and they were doing these kindness challenges throughout their day, both at home and at school. So they could choose, you know, a random act of kindness and sort of color it in and then reflect on all the kind things they had done that week at the end of the week. I also went into the cafeteria during grade-level lunches and read a kindness book to each grade level and did like a little mini lesson around that, which was really fun. And the kids loved seeing the book projected up on the screen and having it read aloud and having discussion as a whole grade level in the cafeteria, so that was really fun. And as I said, we also sent home a family edition of the Great Kindness Challenge for families to participate at home if they wanted to. So that's really, those were the main focus areas of our SEL. Goal this year, we really did a lot to, you know, it was like a daily, weekly, monthly focus for our staff. I had a lot of teachers at the end of the year really saying, you know, this year I wasn't necessarily doing SEL, I was focusing on social emotional learning during every day. So instead of just, you know, doing a social skills lesson or doing a, you know, lesson on kindness, teachers were saying, while we practice, you know, our sight words today, we're going to really focus on turn-taking, we're going to practice the skills of how to decide who goes first, and really just putting those things into the everyday practice in the classroom, which is what we want.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions about anything else on there?
Do you guys, you got a question?
No, you answer, I was going to ask you how it looks different.
Yeah, it does. It really does. It was, I think it's been a really great step this year.
And have you noticed an impact on children's behavior? I mean, are there any ways to kind of measure or quantify the impact that it's had?
You know, so we didn't really do a sort of quantifiable measure this year.
No, but it's more kind of.
But really, we have noticed kids have more language around, you know, problem solving and, you know, what to do if there is a conflict, and, you know, how to respond in certain situations, because we've really been focusing on that, like role-playing at our age level and things like that. And we have noticed a difference in, you know, an increased awareness and language for kids.
Great.
Which has been great.
That's good. That's good. I just have another question about the second goal.
Yes.
You had an online survey and identified trends in data. Is that the survey that you were discussing when you came to us last month about changing the report card? And was, so most of the responses were around school-home communication, is that right?
Actually, no.
Oh.
It was, it is the same survey.
Okay.
But the survey focused on all sorts of things.
Oh, right, okay.
That portion I talked about last time was just, those were the few questions around report cards.
Right.
But it also focused on, you know, communication with the teacher, it focused on how their child feels about school, school security and safety, like pretty much anything that we want to gather information about.
Sure.
So it was about 25 questions.
Right, okay.
Focusing on all those things. And then we, as a school council, looked at all of the responses of the 106 that we received.
Great.
And went through and identified trends.
Okay. And were there any kind of action points that seemed to emerge?
So we didn't, we didn't identify any actions yet.
Okay.
We left that for the fall, but we did identify that the trends that we saw were around the need for greater communication around.
Okay.
So some of the things were misunderstandings.
Sure.
Which leads to, we need better communication around them, you know?
Right, okay.
So it was, it was things like that, that we really identified, okay, we need to communicate better, more often.
Sure.
You know, in different ways for specific topics.
Great, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
So tonight, I am going to also talk about social emotional learning, because, can you glance at this slide? That's okay. Not that I can read it anyways, but, no, I can. So I had two action points under social emotional learning, and the first was that the environment of the school will be safe, welcoming, and conducive to learning. And that was to be shown by a decrease in the referrals to the adjustment counselor and behavior incidents with the assistant principal. I am a numbers person, I am all about data, so it was important to me, and the reason I'm highlighting this is because last year, we had 209 incidents, and this year, as of last Friday, we had 103. So that's a 50% reduction. And for me, it's because of, as you go into the next, you know, goal, the educator, educator students and families, community members work together. I really feel it's because of what we did for social emotional learning, meaning that the teachers are practicing it. Every week, I do a Monday morning game plan, and I highlighted a book called 20 Ways to Implement SEL in Your Classroom. And that is, there are 20 steps, and I just finished, I will finish number 20 next week. Some of them I divided out because they were that important, and it brought me to write a DEF grant so that teachers can own one of those books, because I just would highlight, and they wanted to know more. Well, can you tell us how to do that? Well, I can, but I'd be rewriting the whole book. So how about if I? And so I am lucky enough, was able to, I will be able to purchase one of those books for everybody, because it's a step-by-step, what to do in your classroom, how to identify what the important jobs are for kids, and why they are necessary for building, you know, cooperation and responsibility and cooperative play, that type of thing.
I can get the answer to that on Apple.
Sorry. She wants to know the answer. We also provided SEL training, and then also with our adjustment counselor on ways to help anxious students. And I think that was a huge reason that we didn't have so many going down to our adjustment counselor. She'd be like, um, where are they? And I said, well, I think we're doing a great job. Every staff meeting, teachers shared, we, it was one of the first things we did, was to share about SEL practices in the classroom, because we're such a large school, we don't know who's doing what and what works. So that was awesome. Also, the Mr. E. and Shannon Jones, who is our adjustment counselor, has developed a teacher resource website that will also focus on parents and things that they can do at home, that has been worked on all year, and we're going to roll it out in the fall. And the other thing I did per-
So, it was important to me, and the reason I'm highlighting this is because last year, we had 209 incidents. And this year, as of last Friday, we had 103. So, that's a 50% reduction. And for me, it's because of, as you go into the next, you know, goal, the educator, educator, students, and families, community members work together. I really feel it's because of what we did for social emotional learning, meaning that the teachers are practicing it. Every week, I do a Monday morning game plan, and I highlighted a book called 20 Ways to Implement SEL in Your Classroom. And that is, there are 20 steps, and I just finished, I will finish number 20 next week. Some of them I divided out because they were that important. And it brought me to write a DEF grant so that teachers can own one of those books, because I just would highlight and they wanted to know more. Well, can you tell us how to do that? Well, I can, but I'd be rewriting the whole book. So, how about if I? And so, I am lucky enough, I was able to, I will be able to purchase one of those books for everybody, because it's a step-by-step, what to do in your classroom, how to identify what the important jobs are for kids and why they are necessary for building, you know, cooperation and responsibility and cooperative play, that type of thing. Sorry. She wants to know the answer. We also provided SEL training and then also with our adjustment counselor on ways to help anxious students. And I think that was a huge reason that we didn't have so many going down to our adjustment counselor. She'd be like, um, where are they? And I said, well, I think we're doing a great job. Every staff meeting, teachers shared, we, it was one of the first things we did, was to share about SEL practices in the classroom. Because we're such a large school, we don't know who's doing what and what works. So, that was awesome. Also, the Mr. E. and Shannon Jones, who is our adjustment counselor, has developed a teacher resource website that will also focus on parents and things that they can do at home that has been worked on all year, and we're gonna roll it out in the fall. And the other thing I did purchase this year out of money that I had was social emotional learning in the classroom and provided that book to all of our team teachers, which is a resource. What I wanna purchase is the practical guide on what the activities are and how to incorporate not just say the words, but how to teach the students to what Erin was talking about also in practice in the classrooms. Because it's not separate. It's what we do every day.
Right.
So, it's exciting. Any other questions about any other goals?
You guys have anything?
I could talk all night, because they're awesome. Go ahead.
Well, no, I mean, the reading.
The reading.
You've got the new reading program.
And it's awesome, and that was another, the growth was 43%. And I'm just pulling, we're doing, in the process of evaluations now, and I'm looking at some of these. And they're, you know, and a lot of them had identified that they wanted a 15% growth, and they're looking at 47, 49% growth on an average for their classes. Like, it's incredible.
I was just wondering, the goal two, you had a survey. I was wondering if there were any insights that kind of percolated out of the survey that were gonna lead to?
One thing that we did talk about, I was thrilled with 139 people that responded. One area that we talked about at the last school council was ways to involve parents. They're coming from Chandler, and they want to be involved more in the classrooms. And as they go through up into fifth grade, and that's the, when I, when I, you know, segregate all the data out, it's the fifth-grade parents. And so, we are really talking as a staff, how can that look? You know, not just Xeroxing, is it, is it the maker space? Is it some projects that we can do to invite families in? Because teachers are not, Reader's Workshop doesn't lend a lot of itself to, to doing, to doing that as opposed to small selected groups that in the past that we had. So, we have to, as a staff, find ways to do that. And that's one thing that we talked about at the last council meeting, and I shared with the staff. And it's interesting, I'm in the process of interviewing people, and I'm asking them how they involve parents in their, in their classrooms. So, you know, see what they do at this.
So, watch the space.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay.
Hi there. So, I am also gonna talk about our SEL goal for the middle school. So, our goal was to embed social emotional learning strategies and best practices into students' academic and school-wide experience. And I think, you know, when we initially discussed this goal as a staff, the staff were extremely receptive to it as a focus point for this school year. And I'm really pleased to say that they have taken that goal and really run with it in a variety of different ways. So, we spent a lot of time as a faculty, not only kind of digging into what social emotional learning is, but understanding how the competencies and the strategies don't just exist within the school environment, but actually need to tie to the curriculum experience for kids. And so, that was kind of the difference in skill that we were trying to develop in our teachers. And so, faculty meeting time, professional development time, was spent in a lot of collaborative efforts with our Panorama data, with the training that Panorama provided, as well as Newzella in terms of resources. And then, I really had a number of staff who were so excited about this goal that they sought out additional resources and were bringing those back to other staff members. So, that was really, really powerful. We were able to share some of that information through my Friday send-off to staff people. And as they developed experiences with students, they were sharing that across the school, and it was triggering other groups of teachers to find those connections for their team and for their curriculum areas. So, just to give you a couple of examples, to give you a sense of what I'm talking about. At the sixth-grade level, both teams identified a theme that was tied to the SEL competencies for each of the terms. And both teams kicked off that theme at the beginning of each term with all of their students and then tied that theme to their different curriculum areas throughout that whole term. So, they had kind of team-based events and challenges. So, for instance, we tied the kindness challenge to a kindness theme for that term. But for term three, their focus area was perseverance. That's kind of the tough part of the school year. We dragged a little bit there. And so, they really tied perseverance not only to the students' experience, but also in English classes, they had, they added poems that highlighted the theme of perseverance and talked about how that related to their own actions. And we're able to explicitly tie that to the curriculum, which was really powerful. Another example, in our science classrooms in the eighth grade, our science teachers tied the physiology of mindfulness practices to the actual experience of doing the mindfulness practices. So, they targeted the few minutes when students returned from lunch during the longer block as a great transition time to practice the mindfulness strategy, which the teachers took some data on, and the kids actually really appreciated the chance to kind of transition from the loud lunchroom back into their classroom setting. And then, they talked about the, you know, what is happening in your neurons and pathways when you focus on your breathing and you center yourself back to access the curriculum. And so, those are just a couple of examples of how our, our folks at the middle school really not only tried to embrace the competencies, but tie it to the curriculum, which was that, that next step piece. We certainly are on the path to that. And next year, I foresee us continuing to really focus on that integration at higher and higher levels. But I think this year was a really strong start in making sure we're using the same language and sharing those strategies and investigating what works best for our grade levels and our content areas. So, I can't say enough about how proud I am of the teachers that really went out there and gave it a shot in a variety of different places.
That's great. Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the other goals, too.
Do you guys have any? I was just gonna ask you about your principals advisory group.
Yes.
And how's that going and?
They're a wonderful group. I'm really excited to continue that. That was honestly, on some days, the highlight of my day. And so, they were instrumental in really having that student voice and sharing what they felt their community needed. And so, the Spring Fest that we're having in a couple of weeks is really a product of that group communicating on behalf of their peers with the student council and our other student leaders, because they wanted more events where they could be together and have those community kind of, not so structured, but also structured enough that they, they have a place and something to do altogether. That group also looked at Panorama data with me. And so, they were able to help me kind of break down what students perceived as high-priority items for their own experience. And then, I was able to take that data to the staff, and we were able to kind of see how those connections were, and were we perceiving things differently than the kids and vice versa? And so, they, they've just been really a wonderful group and so, open and being honest with feedback with me. I was able to involve them in our hiring practices as well.
Oh, great.
For the assistant principal hiring that we've done, they were a part of the finalist interviews. And they provided me with really great feedback on the candidates. You know, and they were so happy to be involved in it. And so, I'm really excited to continue next year. We've got our group of eighth graders that'll be transitioning on. We have a strong group of seventh graders that I foresee will stick with me next year. We need to recruit some of those incoming seventh graders and then get that new batch of incoming sixth graders involved.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Good evening again. So, I am gonna focus actually on goal number four. So, we, the school department benefits enormously from a very positive and productive relationship with the police department. And so, last spring, as tragedies kind of arose all over the country, we reflected our own plans and identified some areas that we really wanted to improve. And so, as an administrative team over the summer, all the principals and Dr. Kleeman, Dr. Antinucci, and the police department met and worked to revise all of our plans and how we would respond to all sorts of different types of emergencies. And so, this fall, across all the buildings, and the middle school and high school did it together, we had a half-day PD training, which was very intense and, but, and very well-received by the stu, by the teachers that led to subsequent trains with students. And then, unfortunately, we had the opportunity to practice, to practice and then practice, because we thought we had an emergency at one point. And so, we have identified areas that we want to improve going forward, the next, kind of the next layer of the plan. But we, you know, not to speak for everyone here, but I feel like we're in a much better place with our planning and our process and how we deal with emergencies inside of the building. And our kids, I think, responded positively to being a part of it. It was no longer just kind of like a plan we drilled, we met on it, walked through it. Having lived it at the middle school and the high school briefly, you know, for about 10 minutes, the kids had that firsthand experience and were able to kind of process through it. But again, I can't say enough about how much the, how helpful our school resource officer, Officer Molly is in all of our buildings and how, just how much he added to that process for us.
Great, great.
I'd be happy to speak about any of the other goals as well.
How are the students responding to the kind of heightened attention to school security? Are you getting?
That's a great question. I think our students are like us. You know, I think we, we spend our day in schools.
Right.
And unfortunately, there seem to be stories, you know, every couple of weeks from somewhere. And so, we all kind of, I think, reflect on our experience. And I think our kids are, you know, I think the adults are no different than the kids.
Right.
So, but I, I think as a community, the kids understand this is, unfortunately, it's part of the experience.
Right.
And this is what we drill, and just like we drill for fire alarms and for fire drills, and we, we now drill for this. But I, one of the things that came out of our plan was that our kids are more empowered to do things. All right, there are, if there was an actual emergency, they know they can leave. They know where, the teachers know where to go. And that was something that our old plans didn't have. And so, I, that's a very reassuring thing. There's different language now for different types of scenarios that the teachers understand and that the kids understand.
Right.
You know, and so, I think the more we drill it, the more they get familiar with it. You know, we make, we make an effort to have the same tone at Chandler for an emergency. It's the same tone at the high school. So, as we, as the, you know, the years kind of move on here, and everyone becomes more accustomed to that, and we agree, we'll be, I think, in a much better, we'll be in a good place.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, having a high schooler, you know, listening to the kids, they definitely feel more empowered. I think, A, they think this could be a reality, which for years, you, you hope that it, well, everybody hopes that it never happens. But this is something we talked about, the way we talk about it now, because there have been so many incidences. But I think the kids really, that last training was a different, it sort of flipped a switch that they had, they had more choices to take care of themselves and more options, and that it was okay to do that and not just, you know, shelter in place, hide in the corner. And sadly, that's super important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I had one other question for everybody. And I thought of it when you were talking about the decrease in referrals to adjustment counselors. MCAS, does, you know, there are certain times of year where kids sort of get a little more, like, right now, they're all spring fevered. But does MCAS bring on anxiety at any level in the schools? Do you see an increase, or are they just so used to it that it's another day?
I can only speak for all of them, but I just, it's, it's just another day. We don't make a big deal about it. We used to say on the announcements and put the signs out, please be quiet. We just, they come in and they sit down. And they say now every once in a while, our benchmarks are harder than these, you know. And I, I'm still giving MCAS, and the kids are, you know, we're finishing up this week. I think they're fine.
Great.
I wouldn't say that there's an uptick at all. I think they're more in need of a walk-around at the end of the testing session, quite frankly, a little movement break. But I wouldn't say that there's a, an uptick at all.
And you just get the, well, the biology and then?
For the high school, it's a little bit different this year, because we're switching to computer-based testing. So, I think that experience is new for everyone. And so, I think there was more, you know, we ran infrastructure trials. We've never done that before. So, the computer, you know, there were some kids whose computers we were working through on the day of. So, I think that was really the, the only kind of disruption. In general, it's just.
I mean, my perception was it was pretty smooth, but I didn't know.
Yeah, we're running right now, we, we finished MCAS today on top of senior exams. So, we're running those concurrently.
Yeah, it was late. I feel like it was late this year.
And it's always this same week, yeah.
Is it the same week? Okay. So, lots, lots going on.
There's a lot going on.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, the next item is also for you guys, revisions to school handbooks. No need to move chairs.
So, I'll start with mine. So, you have my proposed handbook changes.
Yep.
And really, there, there seems to be a lot, but they are all really just cleaning up the language that was outdated or needed to be changed, I know.
It looks like housekeeping to me.
They're housekeeping. So, any questions about any of them?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Not at all.
No food or drink on the bus?
No, because of allergies. Yeah, so.
But that's always been the way, has it?
It has been, but it hasn't been in the handbook.
All right.
Okay, yes. Not a new rule. Yes, not a new rule, just, just documenting it.
Great.
And I really don't, my handbook is going to reflect the strategic plan, the mission statement, the objectives. So, make those changes. And to speak to Jim's point, the shelter-in-place lockdown, I've added the information, if it becomes necessary to evacuate, staff and students will exit the building, which was never an option. So, now they're empowered to do that.
Okay.
The teachers. So.
Great.
I did add that. And the adding of the placement of students is just, it is in the school committee policy. It's just really never been in the handbook. And, you know, frankly, I think parents read the handbook before they read the school committee policy.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, because it took, it took me a long time to find it on the policy. So, it's easy just to put it in the handbook.
Yeah.
And they're aware of it. It's not new. It's just a different place for them to.
It's what you've been doing the whole time.
It's what we do.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
At the middle school, I actually, I'll pass these around. There was one addition that's on the back of that page that came out of my final school council meeting yesterday, and I apologize for that lateness on that. So, we had a couple of changes. The first is around our plagiarism and cheating policy. We tried to update some of the language to reflect some of the digital environment so that we could use it as a teaching tool. Some of the examples were just not what kids are doing, because it's not the behaviors that they have anymore. And so, we wanted to, to update that format. One thing our school council decided that we will do next year is a review of our policy on plagiarism and cheating with a goal of improving the education for kids about, about those behaviors. And so, we want to have kind of a committee meet together and take a look at that policy and update it more broadly than just these minor updates here. And then, the addition on the back, I can go through all of it, but the addition on the back was an update to the guidance language to include the social emotional learning skills that they focus on. So, there's kind of minor language updates in the body of that paragraph to include the SEL language and also the fact that the counselors have resources. They can provide families, such as interface and other, other options if families are in need of resources in the community. And so, we wanted to highlight that. We thought that was important. And I can answer any other questions about that.
Well, for, for you and Mr. Donovan, that, your new plagiarism description, does that align with what is at the high school?
What do you mean align?
Didn't, didn't the high school revise or review and update their plagiarism handbook content?
Yeah, Ms. McGuire and I are smiling, because Mrs. McGuire, which was the assistant principal.
Oh, of course that was.
She had that revision at the high school last year.
Which may have led to the decision that we might want to do that here.
Okay, good, good, okay.
So, that is one of the goals. I would like it to be more of a in-line and progressive for the kids' experience.
Exactly.
And also really highlight the, the education part of it, not the punitive part. But what is the difference between collaborating and sharing answers?
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, okay, great. That's super. Thank you very much. Okay.
And at the high school, we have probably the fewest possible revisions we've submitted in quite some time. So, the first one is a, is a change to reflect, a change in policy, which is on the agenda for later this evening around PE.
Yes, we haven't voted on it yet, so...
Correct, yes. The second is, is a change that should have been made last year. In the yearbook, it was approved to be made, but actually didn't make it in the handbook, excuse me. The NHS requires 20 hours as part of the application process. This year, students who applied and will be inducted next week already have done the 20 hours.
Okay.
The item three is a revision to the end of the, excuse, absences section of the handbook, which deals with college absences. Any college visit is excused up to two in their junior year and four in their senior year. This sentence is to, is to address travel days, which are really kind of travel that families go on to get to the visits during the week. There is a section later in the handbook where a principal, the assistant principal could excuse the day depending upon certain circumstances if, if they see fit. But this is just really to outline that travel days are not, families should not count on those travel days as being excused.
Okay.
And then, the final one is about parking on campus. So, it does not happen often, but over the next couple of years, we're projecting more and more juniors to be able to have parking access as our enrollment decreases slightly. And so, it is the case that sometimes students' behavior over there and safety in the parking lot, constantly moving from the back of the lot to the front of the lot and taking other people's spaces, is just a frustrating experience. And so, were there to be some sort of repetitive behavior over and over again, a junior would risk having parking privileges in their senior year.
Fair enough.
And that doesn't exist anywhere.
Right, okay.
And so, we thought we'd place it here.
Great, okay.
And the only change to, Mr. Holgate's running his awards night in the pack right now, but the only change that he has proposed there is to require any booster organization who runs a, either a bizarre or a raffle or a Texas Holden tournament, which is also included, has to pull a permit with the town hall. And before the event takes place, we have to have that as part of the fundraising request, that they've pulled the permit.
Okay, great, great. Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any questions? No? Great, thank you very much. Okay. I think we can...
We should maybe, does it matter?
Well, the, we have kind of a problem, which is perhaps my fault as chairman, in that we didn't post that we were going to be revising this policy, the graduation requirements policy. We didn't post it in time. So, it needed to be posted on Monday evening. And when I talked to you yesterday, it was kind of too late, or when I, you and I emailed about it yesterday. So, I think, and what we've done in the past with policy revisions is we have a first reading where the new wording is presented and school committee discusses it. And then, then we actually vote on the change at a second reading. So, I'm going to propose that we have our first reading of the change to policy, to the policy IKF or the graduation requirements tonight and then vote on it on June 13th.
That'd be fine.
Yeah?
Yep, that's up to you.
I read through the curriculum, the revised curriculum map. Is that what you would call it, this template and alignment?
Yes, that's how the, how the department has organized it.
So, it seems to me as if everything, pretty much everything has been migrated from grade 11, 12, that course which you're proposing to no lo, not have, to grades nine and 10 So, I didn't have many questions about that. It all seemed to...
Just in case people are watching, this, this topic that the chair is talking about was something that was presented on...
That's right.
Two meetings ago, I think, extensively by Mr. Donovan and Mr. Holgate. I just don't, it's the same, it's the same issue, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have this curriculum template, so it was hard to visualize. Being a visual learner, I have to see things in pictures. So, this is very helpful.
The PE department worked last Thursday on these, on these revisions as a department.
Great.
So, that was the last, that was the next opportunity they had from one of the last batch.
Okay, okay. And, and by shifting some of these curriculum units to grades nine and 10, is that going to shift the time commitment or the way the courses are taught?
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to alter the sequence of the courses and where, how much classroom time they spend.
Yeah.
It will change the locations. For example, there's a, there was a unit, I think, in ninth grade about weightlifting, which has been kind of struck, and they're going to use the cardio room instead and do that work there.
Okay.
And then, you know, so they, they are making some adjustments based on what they think they're, where they'll be able to have access to.
Okay, because that was my concern. If you have more classroom time, have you actually got the classroom space? Because wasn't, that was one of the motivations for not holding the classes during 11.
So, the biggest, yes, you're absolutely right. So, the, I'm sorry?
This says it's dropped the weight training.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, the, the real obstacle with classroom space is when you add a, although I will, I should restate this. So, we do have a classroom space issue as relates to phys ed and these health and wellness courses.
Right.
One of the big factors in proposing that we eliminate the 11th, 12th grade courses is that we can't really still handle the ninth and 10th grade one, let alone adding an 11th, a third course there. So, the teachers believe we are benefiting a little bit from, from our enrollment dip, right? We're starting to feel as a high school, we're just under 1,000 students.
Yeah.
And next year, we'll be a little bit more. So, we do feel like our, our class sizes are getting smaller and so, those are more manageable. So, we can kind of squirrel our way into classrooms.
Sure.
At 25 and, in some sections, 24 and, excuse me, 20. And there's a couple of ninth grade sections that are even less than 20 into a, into an available classroom.
Sure.
Two years ago, when we were 20, 30 or plus, we couldn't even get into the classrooms that were available. So, they do feel that they can manage this and that we can manage, and I feel like we can manage it as a school.
Okay.
Did I answer your question correctly?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. And then, the follow-up question to that is, when you were here in March, you talked about a Health and Wellness Fair. And I wondered if plans had progressed with that and whether we could look forward to more information about what, what topics, when it's going to be held and, you know, what topics are going to be covered and that type of thing.
Yes, so, that was a part of the discussion that the PE department had last Thursday, the PD day. So, I'm not sure the specifics about that.
Okay.
I do know that we were shooting for the spring because we have credit for life in the fall semester.
Right, okay.
And so, we're looking to balance that and have it be early enough that we, I think we were talking about March-ish because we want to avoid the April break, AP, end of the year kind of onslaught that we're having now.
Were you thinking of doing it during breathe-out week?
We were. We moved the breathe-out week into early March this year away from mid-year exams.
Yeah.
But, and they may have talked about that last week. I'm not aware of that conversation.
Okay, great.
But we did move that to, to, I think it was the first week in March where everyone needs to take that break.
And, and has there been any feedback from students about what they might like to see in this health curriculum? I know, I mean, I know when the committee was meeting, we had students on the committee, but I wondered whether there had been feedback from students experiencing the curriculums to whether certain topics were needed expanding or retracting or...
That's a wonderful question. I'll have to get you an answer for that.
Okay.
I'm not sure what conversations the PE teachers have had with their students at this point.
Yeah.
But I will ask Tom to get that first.
Okay, because that might inform the plans for health, the Health and Wellness Fair as to what's missing from the classroom sessions. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Right, so, so, Dr. Antonucci's provided us with some wording, rewording of the policy IKF, which is academic and graduation requirements. And so, he's proposing that the, the PE requirement is now going to read four semesters of physical education and health, inclusive of Intro to PE Health 9, which is for ninth grade, and Health and Wellness 10 for 10th grade, and striking out the Health and Wellness 11 slash 12.
The only change is the strikeout.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I think we'll, if you have any feedback on that tonight, let's have that and then we can vote on it in June. And I think we'll vote, because we can't really vote the DHS handbook that proposes changing the PE requirement until we change that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right? So, so we'll, in June, we'll vote the DHS handbook and this change to policy IKF. But the rest of the student handbooks, we can vote on tonight.
So, Chandler, Alden Middle School?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because those don't have any policies, aren't linked to any policy changes.
Okay.
Is that all right? So, any feedback around policy IKF?
No.
Okay.
No.
Great, good. So, shall we have a vote for the, to accept the handbooks, student handbooks for Chandler, Alden and Duxbury Middle School?
I motion that we accept all revisions to student handbooks at Chandler, Alden and the Middle School.
Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Okay, do you have any other correspondence or any other issues we want to talk about?
I have a couple of things, Julia.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to mention that there was an article in the paper, I think it was Cambridge, Ringe and Latin. I thought it was really interesting at the high school level. They have decided to no longer have college prep level English and history classes because those courses are just so important for dialogue and learning and they felt, obviously, it's a different demographic, but they felt there was sort of more minority, students of color were being in the college prep levels, whereas the white students were populating the honors. And they have moved to just having honors level and it's working well for students, even students who are on IEPs and 504s. And so, I thought that was an interesting approach at a high school. And the other thing I wanted to give a shout out was, at the high school and Jess, I was waiting to see if she'd mentioned, there were two students who were foster, in foster care. They grew up in foster care and they just did a bag collection.
Yes.
Which I thought was really awesome and amazing. And there were a bunch of kids at the table when you went in to drop. And I thought, what a great way to rally the troops. And it was just a nice, and a good awareness for our Duxbury community because we don't really, you know, have, we don't see that a lot or it's not talked about a lot. So, I just, I thought that was really terrific for those girls to be, I think it was two girls.
The letter was unbelievable.
Yeah, it was so well-written.
Unbelievable.
And it was fantastic. Yeah, so, it looks like the high school community really embraced that.
Great.
And then, my one other thing that I wish we could talk about at some point, or I don't even know if there's a solution, is the traffic flow, the drop-off seriously. Like, you can be in that line at 8 o'clock and your child is still tardy because you can't get through the line. And it's, I don't know what the answer, well, I have a solution. I think the buses should go around back and the parents should be able to come around the front because then you would just get them through.
Yeah, that's beyond, that's beyond me, but...
Right. I mean, it's just, it's so frustrating to be on campus and your kid, you know, in your, in the line and they have MCAS or they have whatever and they're going to be tardy.
I'll certainly pass it on to the SRO, but, yeah, it's a tricky one. I mean, if more people didn't, I mean, it's...
I wonder how many of those cars are, because their kids are under two miles, and how many kids would be bus-eligible that we could...
Yeah, that'd be interesting, yeah.
For Alden traffic as well as the middle school traffic that you're talking about?
I've never done an Alden drop-off because my Alden kids have all taken the bus. But it's middle school, high school.
Yeah, it's a line, yeah.
In middle school, it's all feebs.
All chased at that level.
And it's morning is worse. Afternoon's not as bad. I mean, you get stuck behind the bus, so you kind of know that. But I feel like there are more parents dropping off than picking up.
Yeah.
You can come through at 2:55 and psh, get right in to get your child at the end of the day. But the drop-off in the morning...
I'd be curious, we could think about survey. I don't know what kind of return we get with surveying, what, why they're, why they're choosing to drive. I mean, I think a lot of it is just personal like that. But I wonder if it's, I wonder if it's related to the fact that there's a charge, not when surprised.
I think with a lot of parents, that is. And they have multiple children, so...
Yeah.
They're bringing all their kids to middle school, high school, once they're all at that level.